Hello, welcome to Reality TV. I'm Raymond Bakari. Today I'm joined by Gerard Catala, who is running for Providence City Council in Ward Nine. The current city councilwoman for this ward, Councilwoman Carmen Castillo, is term limited, opening up the seat for 2022. And the ward itself contains the neighborhoods of Elmwood and South Elmwood. Mr. Catala, how are you today?
I'm doing well, and yourself?
I'm doing great, and it's great to have you on. My first question, sorry, there's a bit of a delay there. Uh, my first question, it's a general one, uh, that you often get asked on the campaign trail. Why do you want to be Ward Nine's next city councillor?
It's simple, right? I love my ward. I've been here forty-three years. I'm only forty-four years old. I lived in two homes in one ward. This is my community. This is where I'm from. I love the people. Uh, I have a Dorothy complex. I cannot see myself anywhere else. Uh, no place like home for me. Um, and the people here, I believe they love me. And here's what they need. They need a tough councilman. Because this is a tough ward, and I'm a tough candidate. I will fight for the people in Ward Nine. I will not make promises that I can't keep, and any promises that I make, they will come to fruition.
And this is, uh, your third time runner for the seat, correct?
This is my third time running. I'm, I'm hoping like most people that the third time's the charm.
And, um, in twenty eighteen, you had ran as an independent in the general election against Councilwoman Castillo. Is, uh, is there a reason why you ran as an independent last time and running as a Democrat this time?
Yeah, so that's actually a great question. Yes. Um, running as an independent was probably the toughest political decision that I had to make. Uh, it was a political sacrifice, but, uh, you know, I work well with others, and I'm willing to sacrifice for the greater good of the whole. And to have both, uh, Mr. Hector Jose and myself running the Democratic primary would have made it a lot easier, uh, for Councilwoman Castillo, uh, to win the Democratic primary. So what I did was I sat down with Mr. Jose and I explained to him, you know, one of us needs to run as an independent and go straight to the general. The other one needs to run as, in the Democratic primary. I will leave that option up to you. Um, and then he wanted to run as a Democrat. I said, fine. And you know what? I will support you, and I will be out there. And, uh, I will do everything I can to help get you over the finish line. Now, if I can finish this that way, I didn't, I had no Councilwoman Castillo at the time. I've since had a chance to meet her. Um, and she's actually, or rather, let me not say meet her, I since had a chance to speak with her in, in depth. And she's a great woman. Uh, she really, really means well and really tried to do the best she could for our community. I didn't realize that at first, because I was definitely one of her toughest critics, because I, I didn't see her doing much in the community. But, uh, to my surprise, you know, she was saying that, you know, she was getting blocked a lot of times, but she really was trying to, to get things done for our community. And I saw that, uh, with, for instance, the Easter egg hunt that she had down at, um, Sackard Street Park, which is absolutely beautiful. Her heart is pure, and I definitely want to commend her for her efforts over the last eleven years.
Before we dive into specific issues facing the city, I want to talk about, uh, semi-recent news regarding your, uh, campaign. So last month, it was, uh, reported that you were referred to the Attorney General's office, uh, following a series of, uh, campaign finance violations, according to an audit done by the, uh, Rhode Island Board of Elections. Just to give you a fair chance to explain your side of the story, what happened?
Yeah, so, so, so I'm glad you're asking this, because I, I definitely wanted to, um, find a, a, a platform, a public forum to get this information out. So I'm a, I'm a transparency candidate. I believe in one hundred percent transparency. So in twenty eighteen, there was four reports that I, I didn't fill out. Um, and they were lingering for quite a few years. And when, uh, the director of the BOE reached out to me, he said, you know, we're, we're going to have to audit you, and I need you to respond to this audit, wh- which I did. Uh, now admittedly, it took some time to get it done, but that's because I wanted to be thorough. And I knew I was one hundred percent self-financed. And it was my understanding that the whole point of filling out, uh, the CF twos, um, is so you can know where your donors' money is going, to make sure there's no misappropriations. So the short version is, I, I filled out my audit, I responded, and it was very, very thorough. And I didn't think it mattered if I finished, i- i- rather, if I did the CF two, because I thought that audit took place of the CF two. I didn't know until the report actually came out on the news that it didn't. But I was willing to, at any time, share my audit with anyone. Uh, and I, I'm, I'm still open to doing so. You know, I had some elders tell me, uh, you know, not to do it, because it's still, uh, at the Attorney General's, uh, for possible prosecution. But here's the reality. I both humbly and respectfully suggest there will never be a prosecution with regards to this. Um, I, I, I am so thorough with keeping receipts that I actually submitted two thousand eighteen receipts with my audit. And in addition to that, I itemized my spreadsheet using the Rhode Island General Laws and codes that allow me to use those expenditures. So I'm, so I'm confident that this would, uh, this, this is, this is pretty much done.
Just to go a little further into details with this, because I was reading about this, and this whole situation is, uh, was very interesting. So the bulk of the issues the BOE found were over a hundred transactions totaling a little over seven thousand dollars weren't in your campaign finance reports. I know when WPR reached out to you and you said it had been in your answer that you said you have all the receipts and that your campaign is a one-man show and that you don't have the full backing from the Democratic Party. Uh, it's, and th- this wasn't the only, um, situation where a candidate was getting audited for an office this year. There were a couple of state senators, even Rep. Ramon Perez was on that list, uh, uh, with the campaign finance violations being brought to them. I'm just curious, though, how did it get to this point if you have all the receipts and were self-funding?
Yeah, so, you know, I, I'm not really certain. Um, though I didn't think of it like this, but someone said to me that, you know, I was being attacked almost to the likes of some, some other elected officials in recent history with regards to campaign finance mismanagement. And I'm not certain that, um, actually, I'm one hundred percent certain that's not the case. But the reality is, someone inquired about my campaign financial reports. And when they did that, uh, the BOE wasn't able to give them anything, because it was only an audit form. And audits are private. Uh, you have to fill out, uh, the, the financial forms, which are public. So the reality is, I had everything already at the Board of Elections. They knew where everything was. They knew where every penny went and how it was spent. But because they couldn't disclose that, because I never filled out the form, whoever inquired about it probably made a, a little bit bigger of an issue than they should have. Um, and, and I don't know that to be one hundred percent true, but the reality is, if, if no one inquired about it, then it, it wouldn't have, wouldn't have come to light. I think part of my concern is the timing of it all. I mean, it comes out right at the time when, you know, we're petitioning signatures. I mean, that's completely unfair. The order had already been completed several months prior. I was in constant contact with the Board of Elections. Again, one thing I am is very thorough. I have every email. Um, and, and when I say every receipt, uh, no, I don't have one hundred percent of the receipts, because some of them got wet, uh, some of them got damaged, but everything is accounted for. And so, uh, I am even willing to make my audit available, uh, to you today. And you can see how I, how I broke down my audit. So each event that I had will be in one color, and it will give you the expenditure. It'll tell you the store in which it was purchased from, and it will give you the total amount that was spent for that event. So when you look at the receipts that I do have, whi- which is the majority of them, it all lines up.
And to be fair, at this point, since there hasn't been an update since this was first reported a month ago, the Attorney General is still reviewing this referral and hasn't really said anything since the referral. Um, but Providence has had its number of, uh, elected officials where issues come up and then result in them having to resign or something like that later on. Uh, should voters be concerned about this looming cloud over your campaign?
Absolutely not. And it's, it's, it's not so much that it's, uh, it's looming. It, it's actually about to be wrapped up. So I, I went back and completed all my CF twos going back to twenty eighteen, and I submitted them. Actually, I attempted to submit them on the first before, yeah, the most recent, uh, reports were due. But, uh, the Board of Elections, they wasn't able to receive the Google Drive. So I, I brought them down, uh, just a couple of days ago. And, um, so tho- those are submitted. And, you know, it's, you, you can't mismanage that which is yours. So here's the reality. When I, when I spoke to the director, I said, in no way am I intentionally trying to mislead or misrepresent anything. If I in error filled out something wrong or failed to fill out something wrong, I am truly apologetic, and I will remedy it. But I don't want to just put down numbers that even out. I want to put down what truly was used per expenditure. And it, it took time. I, I had, it's, we're talking three, four years ago. I had to go in my attic, you know, I had to go in my shed. I had to, you know, find my, my campaign box. And that was my concern. My concern was being one hundred percent transparent and not just fudging the numbers just to make it all make sense. But no, even if, uh, so, so let me give you an example. Being that I was one hundred percent self-financed, let's just assume, um, by mistake that I made a purchase that is not allowed by the Board of Elections per our Rhode Island General Laws. Simply let me know, and I will amend my campaign finance report, and I will simply consider that as a, a loan repayment. And then, you know, no, no harm, no foul. But never in a million years would I ever try to deceive or mismanage any money, uh, especially related to, to campaigns or, or any organization, uh, for that matter. In fact, I was a proponent of making sure, uh, candidates had a separate account for their campaign finances and not use their personal finances. I, I, I was a strong proponent of that. And to me, it actually was kind of a little bewildering to me that people actually put their campaign money in their personal account. I don't, I don't see why anyone would, would, would ever do that. The fact that we had to actually create a, you know, a, a law or statute in order to, to, to make that, uh, come to fruition, it, to me, it just, just didn't seem like a high level of adulting, irresponsible to me.
Moving on to some of the issues now facing the city, so I can give you a fair chance to answer some of the questions I've asked some of the other candidates. A big issue right now in the city is, uh, public safety, and I know this is one you plan to prioritize. There's still tension over which direction Providence should go in when it comes to policing. Typically, it's one side saying we need more officers and a healthy, uh, police department budget. The other side, which is a bit more vocal, wants to either reallocate the budget or defund them entirely. And sometimes they'll say defunding the police. Sometimes they'll even say reimagine public safety. Uh, where do you stand on this issue?
So, you know, I, I stand with the Colonel. Here's the reality, you know. I'm, I'm running for city council, you know, for the greater good of my ward, uh, to help transmogrify my ward into becoming cleaner and safer. If, if the Colonel says we need more police, then we need more police. I am one hundred percent in favor of that. Uh, the thought of defunding the police, um, just ne- never sat right with me, because if we have no police, then who's, who's going to protect us, you know? So I say absolutely more police. But here's the thing, the police need to be from our community. You know, there's not enough police coming from, from Providence or who live in Providence. Here's a recommendation that I would have. I would recommend that all new recruits live in Providence for the first five, first five years of getting on the force. Or having graduated from Providence. Because here's what that does. It allows the police officer to either have been from the community or currently live in the community, you know? And when we have offices living next door, everyone feels safer. You know, even someone, you know, who may have had an encounter with the police, they're still going to feel safer when a police officer is next door. So I'm one hundred percent in favor of new police, uh, and totally against anything with regards to, to defunding the police.
Part of the answer that you mentioned with the police officers being in the same neighborhood as the, the residents also sounds similar to what I'm also hearing this election cycle, which is more cau- uh, calls for more community policing, where officers are walking the beat, you know, being in the community. If there's a cookout, they're, they're there, you know, trying to get, get rid of this tension between residents and the police. Uh, what are your thoughts on community policing?
So here's the thing, I'm, I'm, I'm a proponent of that. Uh, I remember my dear officer, uh, from, from sixth grade, Officer Roy Wells. A, a great guy. Um, and I think when we're introduced to police at an early enough age, you know, just like anything else that's introduced to us early, you know, we, we live in things grown, adapt to their environment and the stimulus that's in their environment. Everyone knows that's one of my favorite, uh, favorite sayings, and that's the reality. If we have police and we're injecting it into the, 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 the environment where our children are growing up and they see police in a, in a, in a healthy, constructive, uh, friendly, uh, capacity, then they're going to trust the, trust the police more. Now, I understand that there are some, everyone's not the same. You know what I mean? There, there are personal, um, issues, uh, regarding individuals at any job, in, in any walk of life. Uh, as they say, there are, you know, some bad apples, but I don't believe, you know, one bad apple spoils the bunch. I, I don't believe in that. I, I believe in second chances. So community policing is a great idea. I, you know, met with police, police on several occasions, um, and, and I say that lightly, more than that. Uh, played basketball with them, grew up with them, uh, and, and that's firefighters too, you know? They, they both have tough jobs, and I think they should be commended for their work. But when, when they do do something wrong, I do think they need to be reprimanded, um, and, and justice need take place in that, in that situation.
The aesthetics of the community is another issue you're passionate about. This is something that affects every ward throughout the city, whether it's mattresses being left around, graffiti, uh, being all around residents on the walls of the houses and, you know, just buildings when you're driving by, cracked roads and sidewalks, the whole nine yards. Um, you would be able to tackle this issue in a, in a variety of ways as city councillor. Um, how would you go about, uh, ensuring the aesthetics of the community reach the standards that taxpayers expect?
Okay, so, uh, aesthetics of community is big for me. And I already go around and clean up mattresses. You know, I already call Waste Management. If you call Waste Management, when you ask, uh, Gerard Catala, or you give them my number, four zero one six one seven eight seven six seven, how often does this number call you? They'll say, this is the most called-in number in the city of Providence. It doesn't matter where I'm at, because though I'm running for city council, in Ward Nine, I'm running for the city. I'm running for the greater good of the entire city in general. I just happen to be putting my application and interviewing with the residents of Ward Nine. So I think we need a, a robust plan to get rid of trash all over the city. Here's how it happens. We need to re-implement bulk item pickup with regular trash, with one caveat. You know, and I'm a contractor, but contractors cannot leave, you know, their mess in front of the, in front of, you know, a job site that's, that's, that's for profit and expect the city to pick it up. Because one thing residents might not realize is that the city actually pays to have this trash dumped. And if they say that if you make a phone call to Waste Management and they come pick up your dresser, we will pay to have that done, but only if you call. If you're going to pay anyway, then why not just pick it up? Because, you know, everyone's not going to always call. So that's something that I would, you know, fight for. And I, I think that's, I think that's an easy, you know, a, a, a easy win, uh, amongst, you know, all the wards. I think everyone would like to see, uh, bulk trash items pick up, uh, back in our city. But here's another thing I'd like, because a lot of other cities do it. Um, specifically, uh, Pawtucket, uh, in, in Warwick, they have drop sites. And so we do have a drop site for mattresses, and we have, uh, a drop site for tires. But part of the problem is a lot of the, uh, you know, the forestry, you know, the trees, the leaves. You know, I know in, in my community, especially, you know, I'll put a bag out for the trash to come pick up of leaves, and sometimes it'll sit there for, you know, days or weeks, and now it rains and, and the bag, you know, rips. You know, we have Roger Williams Park right up the road, and when we have, like, large hurricanes and, and lakes, we actually take our trees and bring them up there. That's what the city does. You know, I would suggest that, you know, the trees, that, that's, that's God's, you know, that's, that's God's earth. Let's bring it back to God's earth. Um, instead of just letting it sit in waste, and, you know, it could al- also, um, function as a, what I call a, a green, clean compost. So without having the table scraps injected into that, uh, that compost site, it would just be the greenery from around the communities, and then that could be transported to the different gardens around, around the, uh, around the city.
I'm glad you mentioned Roger Williams Park, because we can't talk about Ward Nine without mentioning Roger Williams Park. It's a gem in the city. You've probably heard me ask about this in other interviews with some of your opponents. Uh, but what kind of, uh, investments or ideas come to mind that could be, uh, made to utilize the park to its fullest potential?
So, uh, what, what I just said previously, I think, I think that's a good idea. I think that's a good, good use of the park. Uh, let, let me first state this for the record, so that way people have an understanding. You know, there, there's a parks board, uh, and they pretty much have full range over, you know, what takes place in, in the park. So it would pretty much just be re- recommendations. Um, a- and at this time, the park for me just serves as such beautiful green space that I'm not certain that I want to, uh, taint it with, with anything that's going to, you know, possibly, you know, admit any, any carbon or any other poisonous gases. So I, I'd like to, anything that we do there, I'd like to make sure it remains green. I mean, I remember in the eighties, uh, you know, I played, uh, baseball at Roger Williams Park. This was down when the field used to be where the Roger Williams Park Zoo is. I used to walk from Congress Ave, uh, my sister, my cousins and I, and ironically, I used to walk by my current house now on Rodman Street, um, to the park. And, you know, we'd go down there, we'd play baseball, and it was a great time. And, uh, I'd like to keep, I'd like to keep that, you know, keep that going for the kids. You know, our, our kids need to have, uh, you know, a safe place to, uh, to, to go and play. If we talk that, if we say America has an obesity problem, well, why are we not, you know, renovating and revitalizing our football fields, our basketball courts, our baseball fields, our tennis courts? You know, let's encourage the kids, you know, to get out there and, and want to exercise and want to be healthy. Again, live in things grown, adapt to their environment. If you give them a nice pleasant environment, they are going to want to be a part of it. It doesn't matter how hard they grew up. It doesn't matter how tough their home life is. Their kids, they want to be around something soul, something pleasant, and we need to introduce that to them.
That's true, especially on a beautiful day like it is right now. Uh, currently, we're filming this on Saturday the thirteenth. It's really sunny out and beautiful. It's a perfect day to go to Roger Williams Park and have fun, like you had mentioned. Um, you're a small business owner. One thing that's clear is, uh, how much the pandemic has affected small businesses. This isn't talked about as often, despite there being a lot of small businesses in the city that need help. Um, from your perspective, since you are a small business owner, what needs to be done to help out the city's businesses?
Yeah, so I, I'll answer that. Let me, let me, let me revisit the park again, because there's a, there's a, a, a section of the park that I call Pandora. I, I love it. I actually went there yesterday. And it's right across from the temple to music. When you go in, you know, it, it is a, you know, a, a big tree in there that looks like the tree from Avatar, and it's kind of like encapsulated. It's a beautiful, beautiful space. And, uh, you know, I, I often go there, uh, you know, just, just to sit and think. And I, I almost, I almost said I was going to do my interview from, from there today. Um, but as you know, I, I was with the kids at the baseball field. Um, so I didn't get a chance to, to be able to set that up. But I don't, I don't really that. Um, and I know it's not such a hot-button topic anymore, but, um, you know, at the beginning of the summer, you know, part of the issue was, you know, the redistricting and, you know, and, and taking the park out of Ward Nine. Now, I fought tirelessly for that, because, you know, our whole room charter states that, you know, we, we can redistrict for purposes of, you know, balancing the votes. There are no voters in, in, that live in the park in order to, to balance the numbers. So, so when they took that park, you know, it, it really, you know, sat heavy on my heart, because like I said, I've used the park and the residents of Wards Nine, Ten, and Eleven use that park and frequent that park more than anyone else. Now, I do realize that, you know, mo- mo- more people are coming around, um, with the new, uh, implementation of, of the bike trails, which I think are great. My son and I often, uh, ride on, ride on the bike trails. But I think if we start letting, uh, you know, city council and, and, and these, these committees come in and just stop taking land, um, just for purposes of taking land and not for the actual purposes of redistricting as it states in our whole room charter, you know, I, I think that can open, you know, a can of worms to now, uh, taking not just green space but other land, uh, a- around the city that's not, uh, uh, habited by, by residents and by homes. But with regards to, to small businesses, listen, everyone's struggling. Um, you know, there, there's no more money coming in, uh, by, by way of, of stimu- uh, stimulus, uh, which, you know, which is good. I actually, um, you know, I, I commend, uh, the federal government for, for, for doing what they can to, uh, to get some dollars into the pockets, the pockets of homeowners. But what homeowners don't know is, not only did that take place, but, you know, but, but when they was drafting this, uh, you know, there was infrastructure money that was, you know, distributed to the tune of, you know, hundreds of millions of dollars. And, and those are jobs. You know, those, those are jobs that we need to make sure that our kids have access to. So, you know, that would be, you know, a, a great start to, to get some dollars, you know, going back into the, to the lo- local economy. But taxes in particular, inventory taxes or tangible taxes is very problematic. I mean, to think, and, and I'm, I'm glad we have this platform for, for, for us to discuss this, because, you know, the average, you know, patron, you know, they, they just don't, you know, just, they're just not aware of some of the, the costs associated with running a business. So if I have a chair in my establishment, I have to pay taxes on that. If I bought that chair in two thousand and ten, I have to pay taxes on that chair in two thousand and twelve. I mean, I completely think that's unfair. You know, if someone gifts me, uh, a table and I have that table inside my establishment, then I have to pay for it. And when they ask me, well, how much is that table worth, uh, even with depreciation, you know, so that we can, we can tax you for it? Well, I don't know. It was a gift. It's, it's worth a lot to me sentimentally, but its value was zero dollars. I paid nothing for it. But yet we still have to pay, uh, taxes on that. So I, I think that'd be a, I think that'd be a good start. So to relieve some of the, the burden of, uh, small businesses, um, by, by way of, by way of taxes.
That's a great insight on that, because there are a lot of regulations and red tape when it comes to businesses. That's something I've been talking about with a lot of lieutenant governor candidates, so I appreciate you providing the insight. And I'm assuming it hits close to home, since you are a small business owner yourself. Um, moving on to education. Um, one issue that's on voters' minds when talking about education is, uh, what role charter schools should have in the city? They're popular amongst parents and residents, but do get scrutiny from a very, very vocal crowd, saying they take away from public schools. Um, what kind of role do you believe charter schools should have in the city?
Oh, so, so here's the thing. My, my son currently goes to a charter school, and my daughter before attended classical went to a charter school. And I think it should be parents' choice. Uh, here's the reality. I mean, charter schools, are they not really just public schools? I mean, it, it, it's the same community kids going. Um, just one is run by a specific charter versus, you know, the, the public school itself. But here's the thing, they, they pretty much find to follow the same curriculum. Um, I know, uh, because of, um, that the negative, um, the negative thoughts about the Providence Public School system, uh, o- o- over the years, that most people would rather have their kids in a charter school, because it just sounds more enticing. It sounds more alluring, and it sounds like it's going to be, you know, more academically beneficial to the parent. You know, I have friends who left Providence and want to come back, but because they have kids in, you know, fifth grade, sixth grade, and they can't get them into a charter school, they don't want to come back. So I, I'd be in favor of, you know, uh, you know, a, a healthy balance between the two. Um, and here's the reality. It's the people's choice. If the people say, you know, we want charter schools, then listen, let's have charter schools. Whatever it's going to take to educate our kids, that's what's most important. Making sure our kids get the necessary tools that they need, you know, to be ready for life, to be prepared. That's what's important to me. And if that's by way of charter school or by way of public school, you know, I, I, I'm, I'm in favor. I'm in favor of, of the students.
Speaking of the people's choice, the people will have a choice in November to vote for the plans for a hybrid school committee, half-elected and half-mayor-appointed. But for the five mayor-appointed, the mayor can't pick more than, uh, two people from the same region in the city. They're breaking it down into like north, south, east, west, and, and all that. How do you feel about that, that plan that's going to be on the November ballot?
Uh, uh, alternatively, I, I'll take it. I, I'd like to see the city council, uh, be, uh, rather not the city council, the school board be a, a completely elected, uh, position. Because here, here's the thing. When, when you're elected, you actually go out and work to get elected, you know? You're actually filling out, as I like to say, a job application, and you're interviewing with the people. That shows that you actually want the job. So I would, I would suggest, let's try to make it so it's, it's completely elected and let, let the people decide. I mean, that, I mean, that, that's what, that's what the world should be about. And, you know, America and Providence in particular, Rhode Island in particular, you know, it, the people should have a choice. Uh, I think everyone knows, you know, I, I can, I say, I'm the constitutionalist for council. I mean, I think a lot of our issues that, you know, people think the lines are blurred, I say, really, they're black and white. I mean, just open up the constitution. It, it says it right there. You don't bother me, I don't bother you, we all get along. And, 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 and that's really the long and the short of it. So that's my position with rega- with, with regards to that.
And looking at the public schools for a moment, because that's another big, uh, story in the, uh, the conversations about education, because they're currently under state control. Uh, this one, like the charter schools, also has two vocal crowds. The, uh, we need the crowd that wants city control ASAP, back to the city control with the public schools. And then the other crowd is, let's give the state some time to actually solve the issues, because COVID threw things off for two years. Um, which way do you lean when it comes to the current state of the state takeover?
So again, uh, I'm the people's candidate, uh, I'm the people's choice. And, and this is why, you know, I, I humbly ask that the residents of Ward Nine vote for Gerard Catala, the city council, in September. Look, the teachers have the most influence on our students. They see them most- They see them most of the day. In a lot of cases, teachers are with the kids more than parents and other family members. So the teachers have the biggest influence on the kids. Then as of today, the state takeover has not proven any better than when the city was, was in charge. Now, I understand that, you know, again, this is a situation where we can make recommendations, but, you know, it's, it's on the state, uh, to decide. But look, we, we want our schools back, you know? I think we should be empowered. If you look at, uh, studies, it'll say when you have schools that are run by the community and by the residents within that neighborhood, it functions better. And it just makes sense because the people in that community have a vested interest in that school. Because they have a vested interest, interest in their kids, you know? So I say, as soon as we can, let, let's try to, let's try to get it back. It's not going to happen overnight, you know? We have to bring everyone to the table. Um, as of right now, I see, uh, you know, Mayor Loza, um, you know, is, is in favor, uh, of the takeover. But, you know, he's eager to know when it's going to come back. And, you know, that, that's a good sign to me. Because what it is, it, it shows that, you know, everyone is trying to come to the, come to the table and work together for, for a resolution. Um, and I really like to see, uh, you know, a, a resolution that's expedited and that ends with, uh, you know, the city of Providence and ge- getting, getting our schools back.
Is there anything you think should be addressed before it comes back to control?
So, no, uh, so, so nothing, no, no, nothing in particular. Again, and here's why. I think when you put, you know, parents, uh, and students and teachers together, you know, I think it makes for a, a better situation. Here's, here's what I would like, I would like to see, I, I would like to see more transparency in schools. I would like to see the, the schools, uh, reaching out to parents, um, and to students and, and getting them, uh, more involved. When, when that happens, it makes for a better situation. But no, I, there's nothing, um, specifically that I would like to see. I would just like to see us, you know, all come to the table, uh, sit down with the state, um, and implore them that, you know, you know, you, you give us our, you give us our schools back and, and let us, you know, make the decisions that, you know, we, uh, as, as a community and as a collective think are best for, for our students.
These next couple are shorter form questions I'm asking every council candidate. Do you have a certain committee you would like to be on if elected?
Yes, finance, why, why would I not? Uh, so a, a, as, as, as ironic and as funny as that is, here's, here's what this, here's what this, uh, disorder did for me. So, um, you know, so, some, some of, uh, some of my supporters, when they first heard the news, you know, like, oh my God, Catala, what, what are we going to do? I'm like, it's not a big deal. And others was like, listen, we know it's not a big deal. But here's what it did, you know, it, it's actually allowing me to, to showcase my ability, uh, to research, uh, to, to dig back in the files and to create the type of spreadsheets that I said I'm, I'm willing to show you and, and break down the numbers, you know? If you want a councilman who's willing to cross the Ts and dot the Is and say, listen, if we have X amount of dollars allocated for a computer at Hope High School, then no, you don't use that money to buy toilet paper. If we need money for toilet paper, then look, let's go back to the table, let's get some more money. But the money that is earmarked for something specific, let's use it for that. And, and that's pretty much how I, you know, filled out my, my audit. So I would, I would love to be on, on, on finance because I want to make sure everything, uh, is by the book and, and, and all the money is, is, is being, you know, transacted smoothly. Uh, in, in addition to that, uh, you know, public, public works. I mean, I actually already do the work. Uh, like I said, I actually already go out there and, you know, clean the streets, li- literally. Uh, in fact, just, um, this week, you know, I, I cleaned, you know, several businesses and, you know, se- several streets. Um, just, you know, because they need to be cleaned. And here's what I, here's what I found. At the beginning of the summer, I would cut my lawn in the front and then I would go up the street, cut my neighbor's lawn all the way down, turn around and go down the other way. And I would cut their street. And here's what happens, you know, now my neighbors come out and they cut their grass on the other side of their fence, you know? So I think that's, you know, that's absolutely up my alley. And, and same goes for, for when it snows. You know, I know a lot of people don't have access, you know, to, to power tools such as snow blowers. And then we have elderly and sick, uh, in my, in my neighborhood. You know, I like to implement, you know, block captains, you know, ward, ward captains even. And what it is, is when it snows, I literally would go down my street and circle my whole block with the snow blower. You know, if, if we can find, you know, people, one person on every block who's willing to do that, it, it doesn't take long. You know, at least just to make a single path, you know, so elderly and sick people can, you know, can have access to, uh, you know, to their cars or, or to the hospitals or any, any emergency situation. So those are the two, I mean, parks and wrecks, um, as you know, they, you know, they kind of have their, uh, you know, their, their, their own, their, their own committee. But, um, look, I'm running for city council, you know, I want to be wherever I can help. Uh, and I think wherever I am, I'm going to be an, an asset, uh, to both the ward and to the city of Providence.
Which of the mayoral candidates do you plan to support next month?
So here's the, here's the thing, I, I saw that, I saw, I saw the look, but look, I actually have an answer. You know, I am the transparency candidate. And it, it's actually shocking me that this is so hard for people. I mean, I, I, I am supporting Gonzalo Quelvedo. Here's the reality, I am a forty-three year Ward nine resident. My residents are supporting Gonzalo. How do I support someone else and then expect them to elect me? And then once I sit in that Ward nine chair, you know, give them confirmation that I am going to make sure, you know, I'm there, you know, in honor of them, you know, I'm there as their voice. So, uh, you know, the question was easy for me. Um, I am supporting who the majority of my community is supporting. I mean, that's to me what it's about, you know? It's about the, the unification, uh, you know, of the community. Here's the reality, you know, I'd be willing to work with a, any other candidates. Um, but, you know, the short answer is, the easy answer is, my community actually answered it for me, it's Gonzalo Quelvedo.
This next one might be a little bit tricky, so I'll be totally understanding if you don't have a direct answer yet. Um, who would you plan to support for council president if you're elected?
That's me. So look, why, why, why would I not? So if I'm, I, I, look, I'm, I'm not running to, to come to get into the city council for any, any personal reasons. I'm not running for political power. I'm not running just to say that I'm the councilman, I'm running to work. In fact, so much so that I, I'm willing to not work and put the city council as my primary job for the first year, uh, once elected. And if it takes longer, then so be it. Look, we live in a tough war and it needs a lot of attention. We've been, we've been ignored for far too long and we need someone who has the time and the energy who can get it done. Look, here's the reality, I can do the hard, fast. I can do the impossible, may take a little longer, but I'm going to get it done. So I would actually support myself first. But outside of that, look, I'm a loyalist, it's no secret, you know? I, I, I support Pedro and/or in this order of Councilwoman Ryan, you know, I, you know, we, we have some strong women on the council, we have some strong women in our community. Um, I'm, 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 I'm pro-women, I think they're just so much smarter than us guys. So, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm in favor of that. But because I'm a loyalist, um, I will go with, uh, uh, Councilman Espinald. Um, and then, uh, Councilwoman Ryan, uh, providing they both, uh, win reelection.
That's the first time I, I, I think I've gotten a direct answer and, and quite a few council candidates. I really appreciate you answering that. Um, so you did say yourself, so if they don't run, you would run?
So, so no, that's, that, no, I would support myself first. So the, the way it's going to work is, you know, people, people are going to come to the table, you know, people are going to be making phone calls and they're going to say, well, you know, I have X numbers of, you know, counselors who's going to support me. You know, I think we can make, it's going to be negotiations. So what I'm saying is, I would pitch myself first. Ward nine has been neglected for so long, we need to make sure we get in and get in positions of power within the city council. Like I said, I'm not going there just to be silent. And, uh, one, one thing about me, people, people, people have a tendency to think that I don't work well with others. Listen, I absolutely work well with others, you know? The only thing is, I just want to make sure I'm working well with others for the greater good of the people. I mean, that's generally why I'm running. I can't be, you know, any more sincere than that. Uh, I'm, I am running for the people of Ward nine. I'm running because we've been neglected for a long time. And it's time that, you know, we, you know, it's time that we step up. And the only way that's going to happen is, is if we elect a candidate who is willing to step up to the challenge. Everyone says, we want change, we want change. When it comes down to it, we understand change is scary. But listen, we need change in Ward nine. And I am still serious about change. The fire burns in my belly so much like a raging inferno, just like it did in twenty fourteen. And even more so in twenty ten. And I, I know you have to go, but, but here's a real quick story how I was even introduced to politics. Uh, so in twenty ten, I was co-campaign manager for Shannon McDonald along with Crystal Hall. And here's how it happened, I'm sitting in Crystal's house and she comes walking in with a big sign. And all I see is a big black Tino face on it. I'm like, oh my God, what is that? She goes, oh, this is Shannon McDonald, you know Shannon McDonald, he's running for city council. Why you want to help? Yes, absolutely. What do I need to do? I'm on board. And, and, you know, and that, and that's how it started for me. Because, you know, for me, it wasn't about, um, you know, being upset or being jealous or how we, how we call it around the community, being a hater, no. I saw him, uh, he represented the community in which I'm from, though it's Ward ten. I always say, look, there's no direct borders between eight, nine, ten, eleven or any of the cities. They're, they're imaginary lines. My brothers and sisters live on the other side of Broad Street, any other side of, whatever. So that's how I was introduced to, uh, to politics. And, and I'm, I'm hoping the same, that, that people feel the same, same, same way about me. But I have a lot of banners up right now. Here's why, I want you to see me, I want you to see that I genuinely care about you and the position. I'm a product of Ward nine, I am a son of Ward nine, forty-three years. I am a businessman, my wife's an attorney. I humbly suggest that we can live anywhere in the country. We choose to stay in Ward nine. In fact, part of the reason why I didn't go to Pandora, and I call it Pandora, I'm, I'm, I'm going to send you some pictures of what it is. It's beautiful, you're, you're going to want to go there. But another reason, I wanted to show everyone my home. Because there's still a lingering rumor that I, I don't live in my home, you know? Here's the reality, you know, I built my family a castle. Why would I not want to be in my home, in my ward where I belong? Again, I have a Dorothy complex. For me, there's no place like home. A little secret about me, I've never left the country. Because I just love it here that much, it's home.
You definitely got to send me some pictures of Pandora, I really want to, I really want to see how that looks. I've been, I've been to Roger Williams Park a few times, it's a very beautiful park. So I, I would definitely appreciate those photos, so I can definitely head to the area next time I'm, I'm around there. Um, my final question, it's a non-political topic to take a step away from politics. In your opinion, what do you think Rhode Island is best known for?
So the easy answer is, you know, lobster and our seafood. And I went to school in, in Pennsylvania and a lot of my, uh, uh, friends from Philadelphia actually come down every year as an annual trip to go and get a, you know, or you can eat lobster. So, so that's the easy answer. But that actually didn't come to me first. The first thing I thought was nineteen fifty-four, the Newport Jazz Festival. That was the first thing that came, came to mind. And if, uh, if people Google it, you can see that just a whole litany of, you know, famous and fabulous artists have come and performed in the great state of Rhode Island. And, uh, anywhere I've gone, somebody has known, uh, about the Newport Jazz Festival. And, you know, that's not to, you know, to make light of, you know, now, uh, water fire, which is also absolutely fabulous.
Thank you for bringing up Newport Jazz Festival because that, that's the first time I actually heard that. It's, it's very true, it's, it's, uh, I haven't been there myself yet, but I hear a lot of great things about all the musicians that come in and people talk about how much fun they've had when they went. I think this one, this past year just, just, uh, just finished not too long ago, if, if I'm not mistaken.
July, I want to say July twenty-second, I could be wrong, but it was in July.
Yeah, not, not too long ago. Well, Mr. Catala, I want to thank you so much for coming on, it's been an absolute pleasure mine to have you on the show.
Well, well, thank you. And, and, and before we go, I'd be remiss not to, not to say that I absolutely applaud your efforts. Um, I did not want that to not be on the record because I know I've said, said it to you, uh, via text and inbox. I am absolutely proud of you. You are a, a model student and a model resident representative of what we all aspire our, our use to be. And, um, I'd like to congratulate you for that. Uh, and also, um, you know, I cannot be on the show and not ask the residents of Ward nine for their vote looking directly in the camera. I generally am asking for you to support me to become our next city council resident, uh, representative on the city council. I am literally the voice of the people. I literally will put your concerns, which are my concerns, first. I have no hidden agenda. I have no, uh, secrets. I am very transparent, I am the change candidate. And most importantly, I am one of you, I live amongst you. I shop at our stores, I use our facilities and I am the councilman you can contact and you know where I'm at. Please vote for change on September thirteenth, thank you.
I really appreciate those, appreciate those kind words, Mr. Catala, that really means a lot to me. Thank you so much for that. And thank you for watching this episode of Reality TV. If you want to see future episodes, as soon as they're posted on this channel, please click the subscribe button down below and the post notification bell icon to the right of it. I'm Raymond Bakari and I'll see you on the next episode.